2023 City of Twalton Work Session. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight to cover. Our first is Twalton Strategic and Equitable Housing Funding Plan, led by Steve and Aaron. Welcome both of you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. We're pleased to be here tonight to present a project update on Twalton's Equitable Housing Funding Plan. As you mentioned, I'm joined here by Aaron Engman, and then joining us via Zoom is our project team from Eco Northwest, who is lending their technical expertise to the project. Their team includes Beth Goodman, Senior Policy Advisor and Project Director, Crin Sausido, Senior Project Manager, and Mary Chase, Urban Systems Associate. And Beth will kick us off with a project overview of the project purpose. Beth?
Thank you very much. If you could go to the next slide, please. So what we're doing here is we're building on Twalton's recent housing work. The city completed a housing needs analysis and adopted it in 2019. What that did is that provided a factual basis for understanding the city's housing needs as well as the city's buildable lands inventory and other characteristics of the city. Then in 2021, the city adopted a housing production strategy, which is essentially, what are we going to do about the city's unmet housing needs? And one of these strategies in there was to conduct, to develop an equitable funding plan, equitable housing funding plan, sorry. If we go to the next slide. So on the next slide, this plan shows, this shows that the project's purpose is to provide next steps towards. I'm sorry?
We haven't got to the next slide yet. There we go.
Okay, I was, I was just gonna, you know, describe what was said on there. So what is the city supposed to do as it's looking at supporting affordable housing and looking towards fair and equitable housing outcomes? So in this, we chose the actions in the housing production strategy that are most related to either getting money to support housing or using money to support housing. So the subset, it's a small subset of the actions in the housing production plan. As we're looking at this, we're thinking broadly about equity, equity and implementation of the housing production plan, the HPS, as well as equity in the trade-offs and the financial trade-offs of the actions considered here. So on the next slide, essentially what we're talking about is a few of the tools in your toolbox to support housing development that's especially affordable housing development for moderate income households. We're focusing on equity considerations. We're focusing on fiscal considerations. We started this project on the next slide a little more than a year ago. Here we are towards the end where we are working with our committee one last time. We've met with them five times so far to help develop this plan. And we're finalizing the draft based on discussions here with the city council, as well as we'll be talking to the Planning Commission soon to give them an update on where we are and our advisory committee. And I noticed that one of our advisory committee members, Susan, is here in the audience. So I wanted to acknowledge her. A lot of the work in the project has been about understanding what it is we're doing in these different strategies, and we'll talk about those. So just a reminder, your existing conditions, when we look at cost burden in Twalton, about 38% of households are cost burdened, meaning that they spend 30% or more of their income on housing costs. When we look at renters, 52% of your renters are cost burdened. 26% are severely cost burdened, meaning that they spend 50% or more of their income on housing costs. When we see cost burden rates like this in Twalton, they're similar to what we're seeing across the metro region for many communities. So next slide, please. To provide a little bit more context, as we're thinking about affordability, we think about it based on household size. So what we're showing here is incomes for households that are four people households and the housing costs that they can afford. So this project focuses, generally speaking, on households with incomes below 80% of median family income. And in 2021, that was $77,500. You can see that a household with that income could afford about $1,940 in rent or in housing payments. So based on information from the 2020 Housing Needs Analysis, what we saw is that your median sales price was $492,000. That's well above the median household income. So this household had 80% of median family income. They can't afford that housing. When we look at monthly rents, again, this was 2020 data, and we account for utilities, it was nearly $1,600 a month in utilities. So this household, this theoretical household, could afford many rents in Twalton. But households with lower incomes, like 50% of median family income, can't afford those market rate rents. So this project is really all about these issues. On the next slide. What we're showing you here in our red box is the households that are really focused on in this, in this project. So this shows your existing households in dark blue and the forecast of new households in a teal sort of color. And you can see, taken altogether, there's a little fewer than 6,000 households. I can't do that math on the fly, but in this group, below 80% of median family income. Before I go on, are there any questions about that foundational data? Okay. So.
So on that screen where you have the house and you're saying if your household earns and you can afford this, that's just the rent there, not including utilities. Is that correct?
The 1940, there is monthly rent including utilities. It's essentially $77,000 divided by 12 months times 0.3%. That's 1940.
Okay, so it would include utilities.
And the housing sales prices shown there aren't really accounting for the increases in interest rates that we've seen. So people would be able to borrow less than what you see there.
You know, those, I know the rents have gone up quite a bit since the season.
Yeah. Yeah, it has. It hasn't gotten any better. We'll say that in the last two and a half years. Okay, so then a little bit of information about how to think about what the city's role is in supporting affordable housing development and then some of the things, the kind of gap that housing developers face. So Twalton has direct influence on several of these factors that affect housing development. So you have to have public policy that supports development of a feasible project. And right now, we're talking about a market rate project, so not an income restricted housing project, which is a little different. So you have to have the right zoning and density and design requirements, et cetera. Twalton directly controls that. Land, Twalton partially controls, but also partially doesn't. So you've got people who own parcels of land that's outside of Twalton's control. But looking at how much land there is in the city and working with Metro when it's needed on a, an expansion is something that cities in the side of Metro do. And then looking at infrastructure development is also something that cities do. Considering market feasibility, what that really means is that there has to be enough demand that rents and sales prices are high enough to support development of a profitable project. And of course, what a profitable project is safe for a single-family unit is different than a profitable project or say a duplex or a townhouse. The city has a little bit of influence in market feasibility that we'll talk about. The city has a lesser role to play in capital, so your developers have to be able to access resources for investments. So these things are certainly true for market rate development. And they're, they're partially true, but in different ways for development of income restricted affordable housing. And the city can play different roles in that. And so that's housing that your, your nonprofits might develop that's affordable below 60% of median family income. Your housing authority has a role in developing that. It's a little bit different. So if we go on to the next slide. So in either a market rate or a, an affordable housing development, you have different funding sources. An income restricted affordable housing development will often have 15 or 20 funding sources, whereas market rate development has many fewer funding sources. And to get the type of project that you might want, like maybe the city wants to see housing that's multifamily, that is, you know, say a three-story building or a five-story building that's affordable at 80% of median family income, there can be a funding gap. So just not enough money. So you can't charge the rents that would be necessary to support the development costs of a profitable project. Or if it's income restricted, there's just not enough money simply to do the construction. And so that's part of where cities increasingly are stepping in and working with partners to also step in to look at funding gaps. And the state, of course, plays roles in this, as does the federal government. Foundations can play roles, et cetera. Another way of doing it is reducing the costs either to develop or the cost to operate the housing after it's developed. And we'll talk about a few of those kind of actions that would support that. So on to the next slide. So at the top, in green here, we've got the actions in the housing production strategy that add funding. So a local construction excise tax, and we'll talk about what that is in a few minutes, can add funding, so it's a funding source to serve development mostly of housing, certainly that's below 80% of MFI, median family income or area median income, they're the same thing. And sometimes below 60% of area median income. Urban renewal, I know that's been something that the city's been looking at in developing the core area urban renewal district. That's another potential source of funding. We'll talk a little bit later about lots of other potential sources of funding. But, or maybe we won't, but our report talks about lots of other potential sources of funding. But let me just say that they're, they're few and far between. Other funding sources, like say the general fund, they tend to already be used for other, for other priorities within the city. Things like the metro bonds, those are an excellent source of funding. We're considering those as a possible funding source. But on top of that, what might the city have available beyond the metro bond? And then you've got actions, if you go back, I'm sorry, then you've got actions that lower the cost of development or the cost of operations that forego revenue. So you recently adopted the nonprofit, the nonprofit low income tax exemption that forgoes revenue. So a building that was built using that tax exemption, the city wouldn't get property tax exemption from, property taxes from that for the duration of that exemption. The same thing is true for the multi-unit property tax exemption. And then the city can also choose, if it has a funding source to support it, to exempt system development charges from some, from some buildings where you're getting affordable housing development. And by exempt, what we really mean is pay for the system development charges in a different way. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then the last set are things that directly need money. So homeowner assistance programs and things like rehabilitation, that kind of thing. And establishing a housing trust fund, that's also something that would need to identify funding sources. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of actions that are not considered in the, in this plan that are in the HPS. So things like changes to develop the development code, looking at opportunities to add density or support redevelopment. Some of these things, especially supporting redevelopment, are partially considered in here, but not really directly. So urban renewal, for instance, supports redevelopment. There's lots of other ways to support housing development, which I won't, affordable housing development, and to preserve affordable housing development. There's things to, that are impediments to fair housing and education about fair housing that are actions in the HPS. And then there's actions that are evaluating capital improvement planning, programming to support affordable and workforce housing development. So those things, they're all in the HPS. The city is expecting to consider them, but they're not considered directly in this. Before I go on to talk about the actions, are there any questions?
Question? Anyone with their hand up, proceed.
All right. So then, on the potential actions, what we've given you here is a very high-level summary of what this is. So in this case, the construction excise tax. The expectation is that the information presented in the funding plan will help the city decide whether it wants to implement these different actions. It provides more information about what it means to implement them, information about some of the costs or revenues and the equity considerations. So that's what we're trying to do in, in this project. So construction excise tax levies a tax on new construction to fund housing programs and investments. It allows cities to collect up to 1% of the permit value for new residential development or some amount, and the amount is not bounded in the same way for commercial and industrial development. We looked at what if the city had a CET of half a percent to 1%? And what we found is that over a five-year period, the city might see about $500,000 in revenue from that kind of CET. And so as we're considering these other actions, that revenue is very important. Next slide, please. Urban renewal. So you've done a lot of work about, on urban renewal recently. You can use urban renewal to support development of affordable housing, either directly support development of affordable housing in ways that we'll talk about in a few moments. Or, and/or to support development of infrastructure that's necessary to support affordable housing development. So for instance, if you needed a new sewer pipe or if you needed a new intersection and all the traffic controls within the urban renewal district, urban renewal can be used to fund those. Those can support affordable housing as well as other kinds of housing development. So based on an approximation from conversations with city staff, about $2.5 million might be available for different uses in the urban renewal area. I believe, Steve, that is over a five-year period. That's not all for housing. So that is, that is a, a portion of that can be used to support housing. And the city will need to decide how it's allocating those funds as it's implementing its urban renewal plan. So if we go on to the next slide. So the equity benefits of CET is that it's a flexible revenue source that can serve low and moderate income households. So that's your households with income below 80% of median family income. And the city can choose how to focus on programs that have specific equitable outcomes. Challenges are that the state statutes have some limitations on what can be done with CET funds, especially those that come from residential development. Commercial and industrial development CET is less limited. And it also adds cost to market rate units in favor of supporting lower-cost unit development. So those are some of the benefits and challenges. For urban renewal, it can provide a fair bit of funding for your low and moderate income households. And it can do it near some of the employment centers in Twalton. Building too much housing in your urban renewal area that risks concentrating poverty in your urban renewal area. So you want to be careful to also have market rate housing and to build affordable housing outside of your urban renewal area. So throughout the city. And you don't have a lot of people located in your urban renewal area, but you have the, the potential to displace existing residents. So you have to watch out for that. And your urban renewal area is in, a lot of it's in a floodplain. So you have to watch out for that equity challenge. How can you support development in the floodplain without putting people at unacceptable risk? Onto the next slide. You guys have already done a lot of the work with the nonprofit tax exemption, so I'm not going to, to spend too much time on this one. The work that the city still has on its list for this one is working with your taxing districts, your overlapping taxing districts to get them on board with granting this tax exemption. And that's happened in a numbering of neighboring cities. So we'll go to the next one. The multi-unit property tax exemption, this is a tax exemption for, for obviously multi-unit developments. So apartments essentially, where it can be granted over a 10-year period. The city decides where it's granting this exemption, if it's granting it. So a certain geography, usually centered around the downtown, but not always only on the downtown. And the city gets to decide what criteria it has for granting the exemption. So there's a lot of local control in this one. The city needs to, again, get your overlapping taxing districts to participate in this. Otherwise, it just doesn't provide enough incentive to get development of housing that's affordable at 80% of median family income. If you had 100 units of housing that was built over a five-year period, the foregone revenue that the city would have over that five years would be a total of $144,000 approximately. And that's not each year, that's, that's over, you know, cumulatively over the five years. So there is some revenue that would be foregone. This is a tax exemption that can't go longer than 10 years, and the city can grant it for less than 10 years. System development charge exemptions. So the thing to remember with this is that your system development charges, you know this already, they're there for a reason. They're there to pay for your parks and your water. And so that's what we're talking about, cities' SDCs. So you don't want to just exempt SDCs for everything. SDCs are there for a purpose. In certain specific instances, like where you're getting income restricted affordable housing development or certain types of market rate housing development that are affordable, you may consider paying SDCs through some other source. That other source could be your construction excise tax. It could also be your urban renewal district. So again, if you got 100 units of multifamily where you exempted SDCs for very good reasons, you would have to backfill about $751,000. Again, that would be 100 over five years. That's cumulative for all those 100 units. Thinking about the equity challenges and benefits of this. So system development charge exemptions can be really important for supporting your income restricted housing, so lower than 60% of median family income can also be important for serving your households where you want to get development at about 80% of median family income that's affordable there. It can also be important for that. The challenge is that it forgoes revenue, which has to be backfilled through some other source like CET or like urban renewal. Your property tax exemptions, again, they can be used in a similar way as the SDCs. And again, they forego revenue. The city, city could choose to backfill something like MPT through its CET. It wouldn't be a good idea to backfill it through urban renewal for a number of reasons. And then over 10 years after MPT has expired, the rents are more likely to increase to market rate. So they would be lower for, for the 10 years where the, where the incentive was applied. So the property tax exemption applied. I only have a few more of these. So we looked at two potential actions to support homeownership, down payment assistance and rehabilitation programs. In both these cases, these are relatively expensive on a per household basis. So we looked at what if the city was doing down payment assistance over a five-year period for in households? Down payment assistance, of course, it can vary. But we saw typically that it was 25,000 to like 110,000 per unit. So that's 250,000 to 1.1 million for 10 units over that five-year period. For rehabilitation, rehabilitation can include things like weatherization, big repairs, like roof or foundation repairs. It can also be something like accessibility improvements, so ramps or widening doorways. Again, we've estimated, this is a typo, it should be 75,000 to half a million for 10 units, depending on the type of subsidy granted. So it's a pretty wide range, so 75,000, not 750,000. Next slide, thank you. The equity benefits of both of these are really big. So households that have been historically excluded from homeownership can really benefit from down payment assistance, especially if you pair it with other actions that we're not considering here, like working with a, a land trust, a community land trust, that their purpose is to support homeownership for low-income households, especially those that have been historically excluded from homeownership. It allows these households to build intergenerational wealth through some amount of housing equity. Its challenges is that it has a lot higher cost for households, which means that you can serve fewer people and fewer households. Rehabilitation helps your existing households who are low income, because you want to focus on low-income housing households. Your existing low-income households stay in their house by helping them with, you know, large repairs or weatherization or accessibility improvements. Again, the cost is relatively high for, for things like extensive repairs. And there's limited funding. So in both these cases, the question is, is how do you decide who receives assistance? For home rehab, there's a little bit more funding that's available from state and federal sources, especially right now. So summary. We put it all together here so that we're showing you the, the approximate cost over five years and, and of course, over 20 years. Depending on how many units are developed, the 20 years is more of a, a longer-term guesstimate. So our next slide is the questions to be answered. So your funding sources, they just aren't sufficient to do all of these, all of these actions. If you adopt a CET at a 1% rate, it might result in half a million dollars in revenue in the first five years. There's a lot of questions and, you know, housing can have less development some years and more development other years. Then there's the question of how it should be used. And these are questions that I think are going to come out of this project and have to be answered as the city is looking at implementing these actions. So are you going to use it predominantly for backfilling as foregone SDCs? For backfilling things like MPT? Are you going to use it for housing rehabilitation or down payment assistance? The same sort of questions for urban renewal. Next slide, please. And so now that we've told you that those, those just aren't great sources of money, here's the, the sources of funding that the city might consider. The ones in blue are, are, have more potential. So things like grants from the state and federal government. The city could choose without having to jump through a bunch more hoops to use its general fund, funds, revenue, if it chose to. But of course, those are fully committed right now. So sources that are less available or not available are things like lodging tax increase, an increase in marijuana tax, real estate transfer tax. Real estate transfer uh tax and second home taxes, those are not uh legal in Oregon at this point. Um, and then there's funding sources that are are less likely to be supported. Um, uh, at least as far as we can tell right now, like a Tuolton specific general bond or local option levy. Or my favorite, a sales tax, um that'll get you kicked right out of Oregon if you try to impose one of those. So this is also something for the city to consider. As it's implementing its HPS, if any of these other sources of funding. Um, uh, become more available, and certainly I think. The state and federal uh grant funds, especially over the next couple of years, may be more affordable. Um, available, next slide, please. So as you're implementing your housing production strategy, um. One of the things that um we're we're recommending is that, you know. If the city establishes revenue sources um for housing like a CET. Um, then the city might establish uh an oversight committee. Um, and that oversight committee, you'd want to ensure that there's representation from. Uh, groups that have been historically excluded um uh or are um more likely to be low income. Um, and you might also consider compensating committees for their participation. Um, sometimes um compensation in the um form of uh simply childcare, um direct stipends or payments that can help with things like childcare. Um, some cities um send their uh committee members uh dinner um for the family, they have it delivered on uh committee nights. There's a lot of different ways that 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 can work, um. And uh then you're going to look at um, we we suggest you look at partnerships with nonprofits. Who supports specific uh types of groups, so culturally specific outreach, for instance. Um, there's a lot of other opportunities um for building um equity in. So. Next slide. That shows our next steps. Um, and then I want to answer your questions, I apologize for zooming through that all so fast.
Thank you. Questions? Uh, Council Reyes and Councilor President Pratt.
Yeah, um. When you were talking about uh rehabilitation or repairs. Or any uh assistance to home on, like say, uh someone who wants a home. And has like. Would that be also an an example of like a. Build like a. Like a little room in the back or like. An attachment. Um, I forget the name of them, they have a particular name, but it's it's where you can. You can rent it out. Would that be, is that one of those? Is that part of the rehabilitation?
A lot of rehabilitation programs that I've seen don't necessarily include um expansion. They focus on home repairs. But I don't see a reason that your program couldn't include. Expansion, you just depending on where you're getting funding for from some of these. Like the Oregon Health Authority's Healthy Home Grants. Probably would only consider cover home repairs and not uh expansion pieces. But your 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 program could include that if you had funding to support it.
How about converting um like a garage into a home or it um is that part of that?
I think it could could be part of it if you uh if you define it that way. You just have to watch out again for what your funding sources allow. And of course, the different funding sources have different requirements.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, well, when I look at the construction excise tax, it looks fairly equitable because it could help bring in people. To live here, but then I also see that you're estimating up to five hundred grand and. Where I have, I'm having a hard time is like the system development charges, it only includes if I'm reading this correctly, parks. And water, which are two areas where we really can't afford to. You know, not have those funds, so I hate to play games with. That part of it, I guess.
So. You 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 wouldn't, you wouldn't exempt and then not have paid your system development charges. You would, in places that you have um funding to support it, exempt them and pay them from a different funding source. So for instance, if you had uh uh an income restricted building being built in your urban renewal district. Um, and you wanted to um pay all or part of the system development charges to support that building development, which is a big, big deal. Um, you'd pay it from urban renewal, for instance, um if that was something you identified um uh in your urban.
Well, I see that.
Exempt them.
I'm not sure that's what we fully want to use our urban renewal from, and I'm just, if I'm looking straight at that CET, it doesn't even, like, it doesn't cover. It would cover what, seventy units maybe, so.
Yeah, and so.
I know I'm doing, I know I'm doing apples and oranges here, but um it just concerns me. Taking that route and um.
You'd only want to exempt as much as you could cover from a existing funding sources.
Exactly, and um. I. You know, it's it's kind of, it's really difficult because you're taking money and moving it around basically, but. It it seems like it would be nice to help both people um. That can't afford to buy and to help um. Like with the down payment assistant and home rehabilitation, but is that? That seems like something that should be a more state level, not that we don't want to help those people, especially like. Um, so they could stay in their homes or be first-time home buyers, but how much can the city really do to help with that?
Well, the city can apply for grants. Um, if the city has excess funding. Um, uh, which I'm not saying that the city has excess funding, um, then the city could put those funds towards that. Um, uh, you can work with an existing organization that does uh rehabilitation or weatherization. So Clackamas County has a a a program. Um, for instance, um, I can't remember about Washington County at this moment, but there are also nonprofits, so you can contribute.
Community development block grant.
Okay.
I should kind of get.
So you can contribute from other funding sources. Um, a lot of cities do use CDBG funds, community development block grants um to support um rehabilitation. So that might be one more where the city's action is looking at writing uh grants, the uh Healthy Homes Program is a new program that's. Still in development by the state that um is intended to grant funds to cities to support rehabilitation of housing.
And I'm not like the home rehabilitation, could we do that like? I guess you don't want to exclude, but could you like have a specific program for seniors that just want to stay in their home? We do anything we want, basically?
Um, no, um, I would imagine that that doing it isn't quite right, um, you can't quite do that. But you can have programs that are are targeted towards seniors. Um, so accessibility improvements are certainly targeted to keeping seniors in their homes. So building ramps, widening doorways, that kind of thing, a lot of cities do that.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for your answers.
Sure.
Um, I'm going to ask you to look into your crystal ball.
Haha.
Yeah, so we all know what's going on in Salem when the discussion is about this. Um. I don't know if you're paying attention, if you have any insight. Or we're hearing rumblings, the mayor's about. You know, Salem coming up with some kind of bill, especially given the emphasis by the governor. Uh, helping cities produce more housing. And obviously, take money and. Uh, what are you hearing about that? And I'm assuming that if the state does stand up some programs, that would be a source of grants that don't exist today, but we might be able to dip in in the future.
Yes, um, uh, my crystal ball says very likely, I think my crystal ball might be a magic eight ball. Um. Um, what I'm I'm hearing is a lot, still a lot of different rumblings, and so they haven't coalesced around. Um, uh, that I know of this moment, and have changed um around really specific um actions, but I I have heard. About a variety of different funding sources. Um, what I can say is. This is my pessimist, I apologize, no matter what the state does, it won't be enough, but it'll be more than 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 we already have. So I think the state has a big role to play in this. Um, I think the city should also look at its opportunities, um whether that's. Um, uh, you know, granting property tax exemptions in in selected cases. Um, uh, exempting system development charges where you can backfill it. From um something like urban renewal or CET. Um, those those actions can can speak really loudly and help attract the nonprofits. Um, that that can help do this to work in your community, can help build better housing, it shows local uh. Uh, local skin in the game, um and it also helps close that funding gap.
I agree, I'm yeah, I'm hoping to see something come forward soon, because.
Yeah.
It's all a lot of talk, like you're saying now, and you see concrete actions and. Dollars behind it, grant program, maybe like you're saying, matching dollar grants. Uh, but like you're saying, it's not going to be enough for the whole state. Uh, because the demand is just so high, but uh if we can make little baby steps here as well, then it'd be terrific.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, any other questions? Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to talking to you again in a month or two.
Right, let's get that. All right. Uh, next up, uh, everyone's favorite topic, especially Council Pratt and I. Uh, the I two oh five tolling project environmental assessment overview. Welcome Cody and Mike. Talked about tolling a lot this morning at the Washington City Committee. And they're always talking about it in class.
Yeah.
I was going to make a joke joke about how this being everyone's favorite comment, but you beat me to it, so.
And just remember, we are reporting, we are not endorsing.
Yeah, indeed, yes. Um, this works. Good, uh, so we're here to talk about the I two oh five toll project environmental assessment. Um, this was circulated by ODOT on February twenty-first. Our goal tonight is to facilitate a discussion around the comment letter that staff will develop to submit on behalf of council. During this comment period, um, the comment period was recently extended from forty-five to sixty days. Many agencies in the region submitted letters requesting the extension due to the the length and complex nature of the document. As well as a lack of translated materials, so that was a major issue upfront. We uh requested a ninety-day comment letter, but have not heard whether or not. That will actually be granted, fingers crossed, but it's impossible to say at this point. Um. Just before we get started, uh, you know, there's experts in front of us here, Mayor Bubinik, Counselor Pratt, Counselor Gonzalez, all participate on. Regional tables, so at any point, if you feel like jumping in and adding things. Please go ahead and do so. Here is the agenda for the evening. Um, I'll provide some high-level details, Michael B. Our technical expert. We'll begin with a brief overview of the process that led us led us to this point, as well as the EA document itself. Talk about some of the details captured in the EA and say a few words on the plan for using tolling uh electronic tolling gantries. Uh, there are a few key figures in the document that we'll walk through before highlighting the proposed mitigation measures that are identified in the document. Specifically for the intersections around the Tuolton area. Uh, we have a summary of where the money from the I two oh five tolling project. Should hypothetically go. And a slide summarizing the many ways that. Council is currently participating in the ongoing discussion around tolling, and then we will open it up for discussion. So the discussion around tolling has been going on for many years at this point, leading up to the recent National Environmental Policy Act Review Process, or NEPA. And the environmental assessment is part of that NEPA process, so. I will let Mike walk through the basic history of how tolling moved from an idea to a reality.
Well, not quite a reality yet.
Yeah, not yet.
Uh, so back uh leading up to House Bill twenty seventeen in twenty seventeen. Uh. Representatives from this region were really pushing for two big projects on freeways. One was the Highway two seventeen widening that's under construction now. And the other was uh widening a two oh five, adding a third lane in each direction from Stafford Road to Oregon City. Which would include work on the Abernathy Bridge over the Willamette River. Um. The I two oh five project is a lot more expensive than the Highway two seventeen widening. Uh, like several hundred million dollars more. Uh, so the legislature said, well. We don't have several hundred million dollars. Um, so if you want this project implemented. We'll need to start looking at tolls. And that's been their line and kind of their explanation of it. So they asked ODOT to look into developing a tolling program. Um, they've since asked ODOT to also look into developing tolls on all of I two oh five. The whole rest of I two oh five and all of I five. From the Boone Bridge in Wilsonville to the Columbia River. Um, this, so that's the story behind it. This particular environmental assessment is just of the I two oh five toll project. And not the whole rest of the region project. Uh. So then ODOT started moving forward and trying to develop the program. And working through what we're seeing so far.
So. The environmental assessment's a complex, two-hundred-page document with at least twenty-five technical appendices totaling well over a thousand pages and. Um. It's one of the reasons why everyone is digging into it right now in such a frenzy, trying to suss out what all is in there and how it might impact us, but just some of the things that's captured. In the document, the project background, purpose and need, the goals and objectives. And the project alternatives, which at this point are a build alternative and a no-build alternative. There was originally a handful of alternatives that didn't make it through to the environmental assessment process.
Um, so I think that's a key point, it's comparing. What's out there today with a three-lane I two oh five with tolls. It doesn't include a three-lane I two oh five with no tolls option. So, and that will be the difference in all the different like diversion discussions and things we'll be looking at.
Indeed, and uh if we had gone through and done a deep dive on the assessment, it could easily turn into a four-hour workshop, which I'm sure no one is interested in on a Monday evening, so we're going to try to hit some of that. Some of the high-level important things. Um, one of the major areas of importance uh are the proposed gantry locations in the build alternative, so there is one mainline gantry structure across all lanes. At the Abernathy Bridge. Two gantry structures at the Tuolton River Bridges, one across the mainline northbound travel lanes and one across the southbound travel lanes. Here is a visualization of those gantry locations, on the left. Top corner are the Tuolton River Bridges. And on the right are the Abernathy Bridge. Uh, toll gantry area, and then we have a map of the whole uh proposed area on the bottom there. The proposed toll gantries will be all electronic, as many people know, at this point, uh, they'll function by scanning a transponder on each vehicle that drives under the gantry. Uh, we heard through the grapevine that ODOT may be providing those transponders for free, so hopefully that is true. Um, but it's just word on the street at this point. Uh, this is relatively the same system they use on many of the told rural roads and bridges in Washington State. So if there's no transponder in your car, it'll take a picture of your license plate and send you a bill to your address. Anything else on this one?
Well, just a anecdote, I was driving to another state recently, went through one of their toll locations, and they sent us a bill, and so we sent them a check. And then they sent us another bill later saying, we never got your check, so now your bill is five dollars higher. And so I can see some frustration for people with things like that happening to them as well.
I've also had. Arizona, Pennsylvania did do the same kind of system. But when you get the bill for your license plate, you get the bill for creating your account. And for the. Yeah. Because they're not going to do it for nothing, they're going to create some mechanism to collect your funds.
I just wonder if it costs twenty-five dollars to process your five dollars.
All very fair to wonder about.
Yes. Um, the EA includes a series of toll rate assumptions, important to note that these are not the rates under consideration, these were just used for modeling. The Oregon Transportation Commission will ultimately set the rates, but we felt it was helpful to see what was included in the modeling details as a baseline. So during off-peak hours, rates would be the lowest, ranging from fifty-five cents overnight uh to sixty-five cents in the midday and evening. Those rates increase at peak hours varying between one sixty-five and two twenty to cross a single bridge. Those rates increase at peak hours varying between one sixty-five and two twenty to cross a single bridge during the weekday peak hours. So someone living in Twalton commuting to an eight to five job in Oregon City would pay almost nine dollars on some days. Or every day, if that is your daily commute, you don't have any flexibility. Tolls during the periods just before and after the peak would be one dollar to cross a single bridge. So basically a through trip crossing both bridges would be double the assumed rate. Um, so you can imagine depending on what OTC decides, these could be pretty significant charges each month. Or someone that uses this route frequently.
So in light of our previous discussion, um, someone working an eight to five job in Oregon City or Clackamas paying nine dollars a day. You know, each weekday that ends up about two hundred dollars a month, and we think that back to our affordable housing discussion. You know, along with the housing burden.
The thing here, the, your first bullet at the last RTAC meeting, they put out that just their bare bones cost. Of a trip for ODOT, for the credit card fees, the GANCHs, blah, 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 was seventy cent. So doesn't even cover that, so there's no way you're looking. Don't wanna get too hard on it, the, the toll rates are not gonna be this low, because it won't cover the cost.
Right.
So, uh, the purple border on this map indicates the area of potential impact studied in the EA. Covers the area along I two oh five from the I five interchange near Twalton. To the eighty-second drive interchange near Gladstone and south along Oregon ninety-nine E, uh, about ten miles to Aurora. Within this API, ODOT identified fifty study intersections that may potentially experience difference in AM or PM. Peak hour traffic volumes under the build alternative. Uh, for us, that is up near the kind of upper left corner there. Uh, at intersections around Nyberg, sixty-fifth and Borland. The summary of intersection effects looks at two specific years of impact, either twenty twenty-seven as the near term. Or twenty forty-five as the long term. And there are currently three intersections really close to Twalton that do not meet the standards in the build alternative. But do meet standards in the no build alternative. Just zoom, zoom forward really quick so you can kind of see that better. Those are the interchanges at I five there, um, on Nyberg and then around Borland and sixty-fifth. Um, so the, in twenty twenty-seven, the I five northbound ramps. And at Nyberg and the I five southbound ramps at Nyberg Street would not meet the standards under the build alternative. In twenty forty-five, the signalized intersection at Southwest Borland and sixty-fifth would also not meet the standards under the build alternative. And so because those intersections are impacted by the build alternative. ODOT was required to identify mitigations for those intersections in this document. Mike attended many of the mitigation meetings held by ODOT over the summer. So I'll let him walk through some of the mitigations that are proposed, uh, in the EA.
So they gathered staff from cities, counties that were, uh, had locations affected. And then started asking, what can we do? What could we do? Among a group of city representatives, there's some question about how much they really listened to what staff was saying.
They don't take actions of it.
Yeah, and some differences with the way it was characterized in the EA. Uh, with the EA saying that they really listened and other staff from other agencies and I somewhat agree. Uh, so that they, they may have had their ears open, but the feedback didn't really affect what actually got into the document. Uh, so on Borland Road from sixty-fifth to Stafford, they were anticipating contributing. To the, uh, regional transportation plan, that's RTP, that's a metro document planning for the region. To a project to add pedestrian pathways along sixty-fifth Avenue. Um, which is a different location than Borland Road.
But where in sixty-fifth, because if you go towards the Wilsonville.
Yeah, it's a project that we have on sixty-fifth, basically from Nyberg Lane, past Borland to the southern city limits, just right by I two oh five. Um, which, you know, would be helpful to have, but it doesn't really address the issue of pedestrians walking along Borland Road.
Diversion in the ambulances that can't get to.
Correct.
Elementary school, that's right there.
All good points, yes. And then on Borland Road between Stafford and the Twalton River Bridge, this is east of Stafford Road, so it passed the roundabout. Uh, maybe contributing to a Clackamas County, what they call RTP strategic. And that's basically unfunded, but still on the list. Project to add paved shoulders, you know, sort of bike lanes essentially. But not sidewalks there. And then also to contribute to Clackamas County, again, strategics and not currently funded, uh, project to add, uh, paved shoulders. Basically from the bridge over to West Lynn. So they'd be proposing to add paved shoulders along Borland Road from the roundabout to West Lynn, city limits. Right, their contention is that the diversion's not as high on the Borland Road area. Because the tolls start east of Stafford Road, is their contention. And. Couple of the intersections into Alton that. There would legally be required to mitigate for, that meet standards currently, would not meet standards with tolls. Are the I five interchanges at Nyberg Road, the two intersections there. The mitigation measure they identify in the EA is yellow reflective sheeting around the backplates of the traffic signals. Which.
I don't understand why they, they need mitigation there, but not on Borland Road, where's this traffic coming from?
Good question, yeah. So in the highway safety manual research, it has been established that adding the yellow reflective backplates. Does reduce crash rates by a couple percent. So that's why we're seeing those more and more at signals around the region. But. You know, we don't consider that to be substantive.
No.
Substantive mitigation. And then on six, at sixty-fifth and Borland, uh, and this was one that we brought up at a meeting. Uh, it's a project that we submitted for county MSTIP funding, a major street transportation improvement program funding. Uh, was to add a northbound right turn lane from sixty-fifth Avenue onto Borland. They listed it as widening, restriping and widening the westbound approach. I think they meant the northbound approach, that's why we have in brackets here to include a northbound right turn lane. Uh, and that project would actually increase capacity of the intersection, uh, because that's one of the critical. Traffic movements, particularly in the rush hour, uh, because northbound traffic, right turns and straight through ends up in one lane. So if we can separate out the right turns, we can really add a fair amount of capacity there. So in that way, um, that project would, you know, help capacity that particular location.
What is this proposed mitigation? What, what are the chances of this getting funded?
Um, that's. They've identified it as a potential mitigation measure, they don't identify a plan for when the mitigation measures will get done.
Income in order to do that, you have to pay for the bridge and the widening of two oh five first.
Right. So. Yeah.
So obviously, we have concerns about some of the proposals in there. We're hearing concerns from all across the region, we thought we'd share some of those with you. And a lot of the impacted counties and cities did not agree with the modeling assumptions in the EA from the get-go. Um, like us, proposed mitigation projects are either not sufficient, not feasible, or in some cases may not be enforceable. Just because ODOT says they're gonna do them, we don't know for sure if they will. There has been no analysis of the cumul, cumulative effects of the I two oh five toll project and the regional mobility pricing project. That is the other huge tolling project proposed in the near future, but there's no real reference to it in this EA. We can only assume that they're going to sort of pile on top of each other once they're both up and running.
Well, they're trying to, sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's.
Part of the thing in RTAC is they're trying to move up RMPP and have it start within a year after the tolling of I two oh five. So they're gonna put it in high, high mode, high speed mode of having both of these tolling systems up fairly quickly. And like you're saying, Cody, they're not, they haven't wrapped it all into this study yet, that's what we're super nervous about. But I five and all two oh five is told, just mass diversion.
Um, like Mike was mentioning, ODOT has listened, but may have not taken concerns of local jurisdiction seriously. There are serious unmitigated, uh, impacts that remain despite the mitigation measures called out in the EA. We know there'll be significant effect on people who need to use I two oh five, including many low income workers and members of equity communities. And then there's the question of why told this project when there are other similar priced projects around the region. That are not contemplating tolls, the Burnside Bridge is an interesting example of that. There are other agencies currently working on this, um, nearby agencies, including Clackamas County. Have hired legal and traffic engineering consultants to review the EA, uh, so they can provide guidance on how to comment effectively. The Clackamas County attorneys have specifically been asked to call out salient points from the EA that they can hit hard in their letters. Um, there's a memorandum, memorandum of understanding in development right now, I think Clackamas County is heading up that effort. And they'll be offering the opportunity for local jurisdictions to sign on and participate in the development of the comment letter early. There'll also be an opportunity to sign on letter once, later, once that letter has been drafted and circulated. Um, there are also, I should mention legislative efforts underway to either slow down or halt the process altogether. Which that's basically outside of the scope of this discussion, because that has nothing to do with the I two oh five EA. Which is what we're here to talk about this evening.
One other point that it add on the concerns. The EA, there's a lot of existing diversion around congestion on I two oh five now. That we see on sixty-fifth Borland, particularly in other agencies see in other roads. The environment assessment basically, um, treats that as an existing condition that does not need to be mitigated. And so they say that the existing diversion is okay, and they're only measuring diversion above that.
They seem because the third lane will be added, but there's an assumption there'll be less diversion.
That's, that does affect their numbers quite a bit, because they're assuming not much diver, extra diversion on sixty-fifth and Borland. Because there's so much existing.
Existing diversion is starting rush, not twenty percent.
Correct. Correct.
Get political here.
Can a diversion just be, uh, make it optional, you know, two lanes toll, one non, and people can pay who wanna go faster? And that's another way of testing the revenue.
That's something they didn't listen to.
Yeah.
But they're really listening, because each time we go into these meetings, it's nothing, is nothing, we don't, we don't know nothing about nothing. So it's, it's, it's being shoved down our throats and all this is nothing, I mean, it's just amazing. But do you really think something of people made, uh, it's frustrating.
Like, when I look at, like, and I didn't get through the whole thing, but like. Um, in one point five, goals and objectives, there's so much of this that, like, you, you talked about the equitable part already. And, you know, there's not so much our city maybe, but like Oregon City and once they hit, um. Uh, Wilsonville and stuff, there's people that have to get on and off the freeway to go to the grocery store or go to. Right, school every day, so they're gonna, yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem very equitable. And then the diversion is a goal, limit additional diversion, and there's, it's mentioned like three times in these goals about, um. Support other modes of transportation, transit walks, support multimodal travel. And the, and the study itself says, you know, basically like good luck trying to ride a bike on. So it, it, I think, I don't get how this doesn't seem to meet the goals that they outline themselves.
That's definitely a concern that we're hearing around the region as well, is that there are goals and priorities laid out. That the document seems to indicate will not help achieve. So, um, definitely worth noting and potentially commenting on.
Yeah.
So the EA doesn't really go into financial details, but we thought it could be helpful just to look at where the revenue from the project will ultimately go. So the, the plan is for revenue to go toward the construction of the I two oh five improvement project. Which includes all the seismic improvements on the Abernathy Bridge, the Twalton River Bridges and seven other bridges along the I two oh five area there. It'll also, uh, add a third lane in each direction on I two oh five from Stafford, Stafford Road to Oregon two thirteen. Um, there is a traffic and revenue analysis running concurrently with the EA. Which forecasts net revenues in the range of five hundred to eight hundred million in construction funding. Uh, from toll bonds, which basically their plan is to leverage the income coming in from the tolls. To then bond for the construction projects. But we know a large portion of those revenues would go towards either running the project or building the infrastructure. So the net revenue for construction is really just an estimate at this point.
I think that bottom board there is.
Important, but that is.
Yeah, not much.
Yeah, so.
It's millions of dollars, but in terms of infrastructure for that area.
Yeah, so, yeah, somewhere in the range of forty million to build the gantries and the infrastructure. Once the program is going, about a third of the revenue would go just to manage the program. Or as some have said, just so we have the privilege of being able to pay tolls.
This.
I've seen that price go up to a hundred million for the infrastructure too.
Yeah.
This slides just to provide an overview of how the city's plugged into the regional tolling policy discussions through WCCC, RTAC, C four. C four Metro Subcommittee and Tolling Subcommittee and the R one Act. So we have experts here who are doing the good work, um. And at this point, we'd like to open it up with these discussion questions or additional questions for us. Should we send a comment letter during the public process here or not? And if we do, what are some of the things that we should emphasize, what would we wanna say in that letter?
I've heard some hitters already.
Yes.
The only thing is, is that they've heard, I, I mean, we need to do it, but it's just so frustrating, because we don't expect any action from them.
I, I also think that we should highlight the services that are in that area, it's like, like the Orleans Free Clinic. Um, you know, Costco, I mean, these are areas that, these are stores, uh, either a free clinic. But the Costco are stores that people that are, um, looking to buy bulk, bulk items. And typically big families with, you know, or maybe poverty level, I think that would be working class people that are trying to. Yeah, I think we should highlight that, because I don't know if they even considering all that in, um. The labor, you know, people that provide services such as, um, housekeeping. And in that, specifically in that area, there's a lot of, um, housekeeping, people that provide housekeeping services, landscaping. I mean, those, I don't know, they're considering that when they're. Thinking about how much to charge or.
They're gonna have programs for people, but I don't know, that's why the administration costs probably be high, because they're making all these exceptions. But then people have to learn how to apply too.
Right, yeah, yeah. That's another, yeah, because even if they're out there, if they don't know how to. From what I've seen from what they've done in the EA on their website, they don't make things easy to.
When, when they presented the, the Washington Example Plan of the very, this tolling that was occurring, they, they also demonstrated that, uh. Washington had a lot of, of different roads to, to go to, six different roads off this highways to, to avoid the tolling. We have one, and it's Borland, I mean, Westland is gonna get hammered right through Old Town Westland, through Stafford Circle. And then you have the five churches that are right. And then you have the five churches that are right there on that circle as well. So we have one road that's gonna mitigate that people, they said in that presentation to give it about two years to soften up people, soften enough the people, soften them up to make sure that they understand that. And so was there traffic studies done? I had read that that road was not part of the traffic study because it did not pertain to them, Borland. They did do traffic studies on, on that road?
It did include Borland and Stafford in the traffic analysis of it.
But the monitoring it, they, they implied, or what I heard was that they're gonna monitor ODOT roads and it's on us to monitor our local roads with monitoring equipment we already have there. So there's nothing on Borland.
No, and then that's in, before you get to our Tuolton boundary, but to very furthest part. There, there is a private school right there. I think like a, a farm school, ne- next to a Montessori school. When somebody goes to turn left on that, depending, it jams back all the way to almost Bridgeport Elementary School. Just for a couple of laps because traffic's coming in so strong. You know, and that's a big, that's a big safety issue.
Yeah, safety is a huge one. And then in our hospital right there on sixty fifth and Borland, it's a huge one too. If an ambulance is slow, that could mean someone's alive.
So if it's gonna come down, what is the mitigation plan for that Borland road? Is it expanded? That's, I mean, I think sidewalks and lights, but it's still two lanes and there's still no middle lane to stack traffic to make left or right turns either way.
Yeah, I would add a couple of things, uh, you didn't highlight it here, but the lack of alternatives. East West Transit really doesn't exist. Uh, we're, we're talking a lot about it, but again, the net revenue is supposed to pay some money to TriMet, but will there be any net revenue? TriMet's like, okay, you know, the money they can send is, can only be used for capital costs, not for drivers. So they're gonna have a bunch, they can buy a bunch of, buy a bunch of buses. They're gonna sit in a lot because they don't have no one to drive them. That's not gonna help us at all. There's been quite a bit about, you know, greenhouse, greenhouse gases that tolling is gonna decrease greenhouse gas emissions because cars be running efficiently. And, you know, the representatives of Clackamas County are beating their heads on the table going, what about all the cars that are sitting on, in the diversion routes? Those greenhouse gas emissions are going up in the air anyway. So yeah, two oh five will be nice crystal clean air, but to the north and south of it, the emissions are spewing out of the cars that are trying to avoid the tolls. Um, and I think big one is the RMPP. No one has any idea when all of a sudden there's a toll on the Boone Bridge and ninety nine E becomes a parking lot. How it just circulates through the whole region, how ninety nine E is gonna be, especially that's a beautiful way to save money. If you come from the south, because you're gonna have to pay for a two oh five toll or a nine five toll. And the ninety nine W is a parking lot now. Guess what's gonna happen then? Because a lot of people come out, Yamahill County, Marion County are gonna stay on ninety nine W. At Barbara Boulevard, I mean, it's, it's just them trying to keep the two separated. It doesn't make, make sense.
If, if you go to their tolling page, there's like a little couple page little, I don't know if you've read it. I call it a marketing piece, but they, they put a spin on things like they're saying, well, the diversion will mean more people going through your town and, you know, that'll mean more, better for the economy. And I, I just think of like West Lynn with Lamont Falls Drive being a just total standstill. I don't imagine that's gonna help boost the economy.
And then, uh, we didn't focus here on here either, the toll rates you're seeing are for passenger vehicles. Trucks and also our business community is gonna pay higher rates, much higher rates for the tolls. So you think Mill Guard Windows, UPS, Amazon, you know, some of our biggest employers here in town are really kind of nervous of what this gonna, the impact's gonna be on their business. Cause they're gonna have to pass it on. And then they're also nervous about, are their prison employees gonna say, screw this? I'm not gonna work in Mill Guard Windows anymore because I don't want to pay the tolls. So I don't know if that got wrapped in the, the, the economic impact I know is in the EA and it's big. And people, um, are forgetting, and the small businesses came up like, okay, say you're a small business in, uh, West Lynn or in Milwaukee. Are you gonna actually pay to go that your favorite mechanic anymore? Or you're just gonna find one that's not on the toll route? There's an impact to the local community. So when, you know, I five is, if I five is told, what's the impact of being in all small businesses there in Tuolton where people go like, I'm not going there anymore. I'll go to some, I'll go over, I'll take an extra few minutes and stay in the parking lot that is twenty six. Well, it's still free. That came up this morning. That is a potential toll target, um, to avoid tolls. So there's the economic impact.
Have you seen anything where they've defined what a large, the trucks that give the four times rate as opposed to two times? Have they defined that where that you've seen?
There haven't been any details on what the toll rates will be.
That's the secret. That's the secret that they don't let out.
I think there's still a lot of wrangling. I think one of the other things that I wanted to bring up, uh, you know, we talked about the traffic analysis and the diversion. They've scientifically calculated numbers going through different places and different intersections, but it all hinges on one big guess. And the modeling isn't really capable of kind of duplicating the human reasoning of do I pay the toll and stay on the route or do I go to an alternate route? So what they've done is they've estimated a certain number of minutes of delay that would result from tolls. That would be the equivalent of paying the toll and cause the same amount of diversion. I don't know how many minutes it is, and I don't know how they correlate that with dollars. But that in itself is a, a big estimate or guess upon which all of the modeling data hinges.
Are you saying they decided that if people determined they'd have to wait more than like ten or fifteen minutes, they will just pay the toll? Is that what their models?
So the model can't really duplicate human reasoning of the, okay, there's a toll here, I'll go around. Now, some people, they're in a hurry, they're paying the toll anyway. Some people, like my uncle, drive from New York City, he'd always go fifteen minutes out of his way to take the Third Avenue Bridge instead of the Triboro Bridge, just to save, you know, a two dollar toll. And there will be some of both. And so they tried to approximate how many people would divert to a different route by using parameters that the model could actually work with and which is delay. So what they did is to model say a three dollar toll, um, or in this case a two dollar twenty toll per bridge. They just put a three minute delay on that link on I two oh five. And they'd assume that it would take three minutes longer to go across that part of I two oh five than it actually would. And they're figuring that effect on the diversion is the amount that would detour to the toll.
That's interesting because the conversations I've had, they show what their model says and then every city is saying, oh, we think it's gonna be a lot higher in the diversion levels, just what we, I mean, solid guess, but we're guessing what human nature is, I guess, more than they're trying to.
Yeah.
It's a model they constructed.
Yeah. And there's a concern that I brought up early in the process. They said, kind of, we hear you, but we don't really have a good way to actually model the who's gonna switch routes because of the toll.
But that would be what, the whole point of monitoring, I mean, if they put it in, like if they monitored, they could see the effects of this and they're really minimizing what they're gonna monitor. So we're never gonna know. Other than looking at Borland Road set of standstill, but.
Wasn't there discussion about the modeling, like, like you're saying, what year they picked? Because there was a special about the peak of congestion on two oh five was, you know, pre-COVID. And they picked a year of several years before that where diversion was in that. And so at the RTAC, there was discussion, why don't you use where it was maximum diversion of two oh five? And what I was like, no, we're using a mile from, I think, four years prior.
They're like twenty fifteen or something.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and we were like, what? Why wouldn't you use where we knew how bad it was? And I think it's part of it's like you're saying is, okay, then they can say, well, the diversion was bad already. So it's only a little bit worse now. And that, that was driving us crazy. And going with the model thing, as you mentioned, just mentioned, they came up to RTAC that Washington State just did that big tunnel project, I think it's around Seattle, where they had anticipated modeling how much revenue they would make. And the revenues aren't coming because people aren't taking the tunnel. So now the, the Washington Legislature just had to backfill the costs and pay the bonds out of general fund. Because all the people they thought would be taking this tunnel never materialized. So you might be forcing diversion and they're gonna make this project and you might be ripping down two oh five because there's nobody on it, but the state legislature's gonna have to backfill it if, if their modeling is wrong.
Is that what happens if these tolling revenues don't cover the cost of the project?
They'd have to, you know, pay for whatever it means. I think on the, the topic that came a little earlier, but they used the twenty fifteen metro model instead of a more recent one. And yes, there was a lot more, I think a lot more traffic in two oh five in twenty nineteen than in twenty fifteen. Because this whole area of the metro region has grown so much. They didn't have a solid enough model from twenty nineteen to be able to use it. The twenty fifteen data had a lot of kind of ground truthing. And they typically do that only every five years. So their twenty twenty model, they figure is so affected by COVID that they wouldn't use it. So they end up going back to the twenty fifteen.
I really appreciate that you explained that to us and it's been asked how many times to ODOT and we've never gotten the answer.
I have a list of questions.
So, or maybe some are comments, but I mean, for me, looking at these pedestrian and bike improvements, which is great for like going around town and local, but like when I hop on a freeway, I'm not going someplace close where I could walk or ride a bike. I'm going someplace farther away. So when I see that we have pedestrian and bike improvements, again, great for local transportation, but going any amount of distance where I'm gonna hop on the freeway anyway, just, I, I don't get it. Um, and maybe there's something I'm missing that somebody else can explain to me. No.
It's gonna be faster.
Well, maybe faster, but, um, I mean, and just time. I mean, people are busy. I mean, I would love to ride my bike to Oregon City, but I don't know when I have the time to, you know, to take that much time for transportation, but, um, so one comment I had, um, so I was on the, um, diversion subcommittee and there's some questions that were brought up that were never answered. I'm sure you're surprised, but uh, we had talked about who's paying for mitigation projects. And when, last time that was brought up, when I was on the committee, there was, there wasn't a real answer to that. And I'm wondering if there's an answer today. Is ODOT paying for it or is it going to be on the cities or is it a mixture of both? Do we know anything?
I have not seen an answer on that or a proposal from ODOT.
Okay, cuz
Although what I have seen is it'll take so long to pay off the project that I would doubt that any tolling revenue would come to mitigation projects, but I haven't seen that definitively.
So basically they're just saying these are things that you could do as a city to improve diversion, not that they would help fund any of it.
It, it's something I think that you sort of just do.
Right.
Improvements are the priority.
Right. And then another question I had, um, again, I asked this when I was on the subcommittee and never, I never got an answer, but uh, we were talking about the, the, this mitigation list and my question was what projects didn't make the mitigation list or you know, like just didn't make it and why? Cause part of the question that ODOT had was, you know, there are just lived experiences that we have in the cities that they're not aware of, um, that their modeling can't capture perhaps. And, um, but we never saw the, like that list of projects that like just didn't make it, but perhaps there are things that need to be considered. But again, if there's this mitigation list that nobody's paying for, it's like, I don't know, I just, it's kind of weird. Is there a sunset date yet? Or is there no sunset date on the tolling still?
Depends.
Depends.
Talked to.
Okay.
There's talk if they just build the bridge, it would be a sunset. But if they did two oh five and the bridge, it won't be a sunset. And if they do RMPP, it would never sunset.
And that's, I mean, that's one of the, the biggest concerns that I hear from talking to people about tolling is when is it gonna end? And, or is this just an open revenue stream forever?
Former New Yorker.
Let's just start in the red.
Uh, and then I have the same thing. I mean, I'm concerned of how it's gonna impact businesses. I mean, I think of, you know, places that I travel to go to certain, to patronize certain businesses. And I worry about how our businesses are gonna survive. And I mean, is there any sort of, you know, study we can do to say this is, you know, this is the impact to our business community. Cause I think it's very important, uh, very important concern for our business community. I mean, I, people, I know a lot of people that come here for Cabela's and are people going to then shop at, you know, their local, local stores instead of coming and making that trip and, and lots of other different stores, but a big one that comes to mind.
Is there a way in your letter you can just, I mean, the bottom line is we just want answers. I mean, they have concerns, it would be nice to get clear answers on anything.
I've heard, I don't specifically, but I've heard there's this blatant mistakes there in analysis too, that some people are picking up on. I don't know if you picked up on it yet, but
Eighty-one miles to
Oh yes, just assumptions they've made that are wrong. Um, and that I know I heard, you know, their, that promotion video for this, there was this, a mistake at like a minute fifty something seconds, they went to KGW. So they're, they are making mistakes. So hopefully, I know it's a toll, Cody and Mike, but if you find anything in there, you go, this isn't right. This is, you know, find it, send it off to the Clackamas County attorneys and flag it in our letter.
It just seems like there's a lot of, um, I don't wanna call it distrust, but we don't have answers. There's, there's mistakes. There's, I mean, there's issues that aren't being addressed. And so it's like, there's uneasy and like distrust because there's no concrete answer. Scary.
So you mentioned the one question about projects that didn't make the list. Uh, one example is, uh, when the diversion group was looking at the Nyberg Interchange. And basically what they said is Nyberg Interchange is already so built out like double left turn lanes and that they didn't think adding more lanes or more capacity there would be feasible. And they said, well, it's not feasible, so they just kind of moved on.
But it should still be looked at and considered to see, I mean, it just seems like, okay, it's a just because we know it's a problem, doesn't mean it's gonna go away by ignoring it.
Yeah.
I mean, especially if we're gonna be expected to handle these problems. I mean, we should have access and visibility to them. If they've done the study, then it just shouldn't fall off the list somewhere.
Is that enough for their letter?
They're gonna get so many letters. I mean, they're gonna get in the data. I mean, that, the last public comment they had for, it was thousands of comments. They had a purge through, well, pretty much that's what they did, read through.
Can, may I ask, um, and maybe this is something that I, you know, mentioned it, but I have not quite picked up. Uh, is it, I feel like it's just moving forward without any, any consideration of stopping it. And so I guess it's
They're, they're on a timeline because the, they have to have the bond money. They kind of front loaded the money to pay for the Abernathy, but they will need the toll funding to complete the payments on the Abernathy Bridge. So I've been told from people at ODOT, for some reason, um, say that the Senate bill that's floating around, that says stop tolling happens, they will stop construction
They will.
On the bridge because they have no money for it. All the assumption is that tolling will go through the Abernathy Bridge at, at a minimum, the Abernathy Bridge.
Goes through. If that goes through, then the tolling will go through.
Yeah. So there, there are some, they're assuming that money's coming in for all this. If it doesn't happen, the tolling doesn't happen, none of this will happen. I don't know how you stop a bridge improvement project, mid course, but that's what they said they would do.
Well, if they're two thirds done and the tolling revenue doesn't meet expectations, are they gonna do the same thing?
And though the legislature has to backfill. Yeah, that, that's the, the question we're having is what if, um, this doesn't happen, what, what's plan B for ODOT for funding these projects? And, you know, before the meeting started, we were talking about the vehicle mile tax. Uh, some folks feel that's inequitable because some, you go out to Eastern Oregon, people have to drive greater distances to get services than we do here.
Right.
So we'll pay a higher proportion of the tax. So what is ODOT gonna come up with if this doesn't go, doesn't, doesn't go through? And are there better alternatives? I mean, is there something else there? Finished my article, Wild and Life, and it talks about this. And part of this is, folks need to talk to their legislators and senators to see where they stand on this, because in addition to housing, homelessness, and a couple of other things, this should be top priority in the interstate bridge. This should be a priority, a priority for legislature, because end of twenty, the tolls are supposed to come up at the end of twenty-four, for Abernathy. So it's not that far away.
Can you remind us of the timing for our comment letter?
Yeah, currently, the due date is April twenty-first. So what we'll do is, we'll synthesize what we took away from this evening, we'll try to maybe get some clarity on things that are questions to recirculate. So, uh, you can continue forming questions or asking for clarification, and we'll get a draft for everyone to review, and we'll move on from there with the assumption that the due date is gonna stay April twenty-first.
The, the nice thing here, like Cody mentioned, is the, the Clackamas County Cities are working together. Um, so we're all, staffs are talking together, the legal departments, um, so that we all, you know, don't have the same exact letter, but we all hit the things we have to hit specific to our area, part of, you know, as part of the plan. You know, that, you know, we can look at other cities' letters and, you know, riff on them, support them, so it's not just ours.
The two oh five committee is gonna start working on issues for C four letter.
Then, uh, yeah, we mentioned the Clackamas County Attorney would be coming up with points that if they find certain things that, you know, give us better legal standing, uh, our intention would be to include that in the letter as well, as long as they agree with the kinds of things that we've heard.
You just wait till the twentieth of December. Any other questions? Alright, thanks, Mike and Cody.
Thank you.
How long, did you read all the appendixes too?
Nope. They're on my reading.
Alright. That brings us to Uh, alright, so for tonight, we've got three proclamations. We've got a proclamation for Parkinson's Awareness Month, we'd like to do that one. Council Pratt would do that one, Arbor Month. Council Sacco, everybody write this down, I always forget this. We've got, you just got recognition, I don't think there's proclamation for that, we do have a proclamation for the employee of the year, and I'll read that one. Uh, Council Gonzalez, you're up for the pledge allegiance tonight. Um, any, uh, discuss, any questions about the consent agenda?
There is, I do, there is a, I, I agenda that I'd like to get removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And that is the idea advisory committee, I'd like to get that removed from the consent agenda.
Alright, so when we go to, when we start discussing it, go ahead and make a little question. Yeah, it, yeah, it's under ordinance, yep. I'm number one. So we'll have a Yeah, so it's on the, there's only three items of consent. We're okay with consent? Alright, uh, and, uh, pledge, proclamations. That will go ahead, and you want to do Don first? Don has an announcement. Imagine that, has to do with money.
Good evening, Mayor Council, I just want to give you a brief update on the parks bond and the bond sale. Uh, particularly, you'll be getting a communication, either, I'm not sure if it's directly from me or from our financial advisor by the end of the week. So right now, we're putting together, we've got a team, an internal team, which is Sherilyn, Megan, Ross, myself, and my assistant director, Matt, we're working with our bond council, as well as our financial advisors. We're putting together what's called a preliminary official statement. And that's a document that goes out to investors, to give them material information about the city. But the bonds are gonna be used for, uh, just general information about the city, uh, our financial position and so forth, it's a significant sized document. You'll be getting a copy of it by the end of the week, so to look at it, to see if you notice anything that you want to comment on, or any statements you feel might be material, materially misstated. Uh, because, and you'll, we'll ask for comments back by the twenty-eighth of March. We'll send it out to the, uh, or the financial advisor will send that to the investors on March twenty-ninth. The plan right now is for the bond sale to happen on April twelfth. And we will then, uh, come back to you with the results, and we'll hopefully have really good results, and that's what we're anticipating. Uh, we also, this Thursday, have a call with Moody's for a rating call. Uh, so as you know, we have a double A one rating, which is the second highest, although either confirm that, or if we're hopeful, uh, maybe get upgraded, but, uh, you know, we'll present to them, uh, if nothing else, to confirm our double A one rating. So I just want to give you that quick update that you'll be getting a communication by the end of the week, probably Wednesday or Thursday, to, uh, to look over, you don't have to read the whole thing if you don't want to, but this will be your opportunity, yeah, to see what we're sending out to investors and comment if you have any comments. So just want to give you the heads up before all of a sudden it showed up in your email.
That brings us to council communications, I'll start to my right with Council Sacco.
Uh, I just have one, on February twenty-eighth, I went to the Willamette River Water Coalition Meeting. Uh, we approved the budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, we also got an update on the Willamette River Basin feasibility study. Um, so if anybody's interested in that, I could pull that off their website and send it to you.
Council Rance.
Um, I attended a meeting, um, at the library with, um, with the residents of Las Casitas. People from Las Casitas, and we discussed the, um, the park, um, Nice Stone Ridge Park, uh, and kind of reported back to them about the bond and you know, what, you know, they, the plans that they, they, the different, um, sketches that we had and which one we went with. So it was a, just a good meeting to, to report back to them, they had a lot of questions, and, you know, and, um, but it was, that was, that's all I did.
I have no updates, I, I attended the meeting this morning with, with you, so that was quite long, so.
I'm the President Pratt.
Um, my only meeting was a C four meeting, and we were the first group to get the ODOT presentation on the environmental analysis, so nobody really had much time to read it, and, but the the thing that struck us, which was mentioned, is that, like, they're, they're saying tolling with the third lane as opposed to no tolling without the third lane. So we all thought it was, you know, just look at it. That's it.
Oh, wow, okay, that was, that was surprisingly light, two weeks for me also. On Friday, I attended the Walton Famers Excellence of Business Awards Dinner with, Sherilyn was there too. Sherilyn presented some awards. Um, it was a pretty nice, uh, time, uh, first time we've had it in several years, because COVID, uh, very well attended, and they threw in DJ and dancing this year. So, very nice time. Uh, I stayed a little while, but I did dance. Uh, next thing up, uh, my meetings today, um, start off the morning with the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Uh, ODOT presented their statewide transportation improvement plan update for two nineteen, yeah, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. They have three billion dollars statewide to spend on projects throughout the state. In our area of Region One, which is the metro region, uh, six hundred and thirty million dollars worth of projects will be funded. They're taking these projects out to public comment, so if you'd like to comment on, the one that's closest to us is on April eighteenth at the Beaverton Library, between eleven and one P M. Uh, they're proposing to spend three hundred and eleven of that six hundred and thirty million on bridge projects and ADA compliance. Um, so be, uh, if you have time to go to check it out or go to the website, but they're looking for public comment on their statewide transportation improvement plan. And, uh, a project, a study I'd never heard of, it was the first time I, uh, this morning, was like, what? Uh, it's called the West Side Multi-Model Improvement Study. And it's being run by ODOT and Metro, and what it is, is studying twenty-six from Hillsborough all the way to the Vista Ridge Tunnel, on how to improve traffic flow, rate flow. And in, in addition to looking to the actual route itself, there was a buffer area around it. So they're looking at potential diversion, you know, when they look at projects or how streets will feed into twenty-six, so basically from Beaverton up to Bethany, uh, they're looking at, you know, how these, how the streets work together on twenty-six, and what's the possibilities? And what are the ideas of how we can get things moving, you know, quicker and more efficiently on twenty-six from Hillsborough into the city? One of the biggest things that came up was Cornelius Pass Road, you know, as an alternate, because I, I never realized this before. You know, trucks with hazardous, hazardous materials aren't allowed through the Vista Ridge Tunnel. So what they have to do is, uh, deviate up to Cornelius Pass Road and take Highway thirty in, into the city. Um, so of course, Cornelius Pass Road is a major route now that the state built out and the county built out just most recently, but it's pretty interesting, they're gonna have by the end of this year, recommendations, everything from widening twenty-six, which I was like, is that possible? I thought it was totally built out, to tolling twenty-six. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to that, they're gonna come back with a presentation in a few months, but, uh, this is something that was never on my radar. Uh, I guess because it's on the west side versus our side, uh, all the cities on the west side are involved with this project, in addition to the city of Portland, but you know, as, as of today, I think the mayor Cornelius was saying, uh, on Sundays, on twenty-six, it's back to pre-COVID levels. Uh, there's backups to Vista Ridge Tunnel all the way up the hill, um, on a Sunday afternoon now. It was packed up, and, uh, the truckers are not using twenty-six, because it's just not reliable to find other routes, all weird routes to get, you know, their training, um, freight from Hillsborough into the city of Portland up to the terminals on the river. And that's it. Sherilyn.
April fifth, from ten to noon, ODOT is doing a tabling event at the, at the Walton Public Library for the tolling um, environmental assessment, uh, so there's only one, two, three, four, five of them, one's in Oregon City, or two are in Oregon City, one's in Gladstone and one's in Walton, so.
We have that up on the city website.
I believe it's on our social media, I saw it, uh, through the library.
Just start pushing that out, because interest is starting to, with the EA coming out.
Yeah.
More people are interested now.
Okay.
And hearing about it, it'd be way easier to hear from ODOT, and, but we don't know if we can beat them up. Oh, yeah, okay, was April fifth when?
April fifth, ten to noon, at the library.
I'll do that, yeah, because Council Pratt, Council Secretary Pratt, just reminded me, as in my article in a Michael, I'll send a revision in to include that.
It says an information table, so I'm not sure there's a presentation, but, uh, they'll have, I think they'll have staff there.
Oh, I think then they'll get covered with questions.
Okay, we can put that on our social media sites like, uh.
Yeah, we can push that out. That was it.
Okay, anything else? We've got fifteen minutes or so, go ahead and, uh, close this work session, we'll come back at seven o'clock.